Please be seated. Mr. Dugan, I remind you that...
Yes, I accept that. Thank you. Board pleasers. Now, Mr. Dugan, before, I forget. Yesterday was a question raised to Mr. Harkins about fire preparedness plans and what had they prepared in bushfire season? Have you had the opportunity of getting a printout that shows when that occurred?
Yes, I have. I've looked up when I'd sent the plans out in January. If I could just read the dates. There was approximately one... six preparedness plans ranging from 13th of the first, 14th of the first, 15th of the first, 16th of the first, 27th of the first and 2nd of the second. Thank you.
Would it be further, Dr. Beattie, be tended or would that transference of evidence satisfy the need?
You can accept his evidence without pressure.
Thank you. Could I take you back to the fire preparedness plan that I was asking you questions about at lunchtime, which was Exhibit... 14, I think. And I think it got down to manning and available resources in this podium. Now, the Diamond Protection Fire Tanker, could you tell the board what's that tanker?
Excuse me, as I mentioned before, we have two XCFA tankers on site, which are 3,000 litre capacity, one of which is stationed with the Diamond Protection at the front gate. It can also be utilised in first response to any emergency in the power station and/or mine.
And adequate manning of the 1x7 crew, what does that mean?
That makes sure that there's adequate manning to do their normal work for the day, but also have enough manning to respond to an emergency situation if the need arises.
The next instruction relates to communications on Channel 29 UHF radio. What's the import of that?
Yeah, that's so that we have, as people may not realise, there's 40 channels on UHF and we predominantly operate on two or three in the mine. But this is to make sure that in the event of emergency, we go to all one channel, which is 29.
And...
Sorry, Mr. Riordan, but that in fact wasn't the case on the day of this 8th. They reverted to Channel 21?
I believe so, from what I listened to Mr. Shanahan's evidence when he called on 29, yep.
And do you have any understanding of why there would be a change in number of channel?
No, I don't.
The fire tanker allocation ensured that all the 30 tonne tankers were owned half full at all times. What's the intention behind that instruction?
This is a fire preparedness plan for the next day or two days, or next day in this case. That's so that that tanker can still do its duties as in watering roads and doing its normal earthwork duties. But usually, if you're just doing an earthworks project, you'll run your tanker down to nearly out before you go and refill. By saying to it to only stop at half full and then go and refill, if in the event of an emergency you need to respond, you'll still have 15,000 litres there.
Thank you. The 7th page talks about the dedication of a fire alert event. You asked some questions about this, but can you tell the board, with these features in place, operating as this was on a Saturday, would there have been any difference in substance with the fire preparedness, if a fire alert had been prepared as opposed to people complying with the fire preparedness plan?
No, not really. The main object of the fire alert is during the weekdays when you have other persons other than the operational crew on the coal benches, for example, the maintenance and any other contractual workforce that's working on there. During the weekend, maintenance is not on the coal benches.
Now, that was prepared on the Friday...
That's correct.
And you gave Mr. Shanahan some assistance with it.
That's correct.
You also prepared the next one in that group which was for the Sunday, which was identical except that plainly enough it provided for overnight sprinkling on the Saturday night rather than the Friday night, etc. Was that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The mine operations group, as we explained earlier, has the capacity to automatically turn on the sprinklers to wet down the mine and that was the case at this point.
Now, when you prepared that on the Friday, were you aware of the fire that had started north west of the mine at Hearns Oak?
I'm not sure whether it was just before or during the notification that I was aware there was a fire, but in the event, I still would have put this out due to the total fire ban that was declared for Saturday and Sunday.
After you did hear of the fire on the Friday...
Yes.
After you heard of the fire, in paragraph 37 you say, "You had numerous discussions about the fire and the potential threat of the fire" with Dave Shanahan.
That's correct.
Could you say what additional arrangements or suggestions were put in place as a result of those discussions?
Yeah, it was to divert our fire service personnel or 1x7 services personnel along with the RTL contractors over to that edge of the mine with the two 30,000 litre tankers.
Which edge of the mine?
Oh, sorry, the northwestern edge, corresponding to the line of Hearns Oak. And they were to remain in a patrolling capacity during the rest of that day.
And you also mentioned you stayed with two graders and two dozes. What's the purpose for those?
Yeah, the graders and dozes, as mentioned before, can sort of first line attack if indeed you spot a fast running grass fire coming towards you. You can quite quickly establish a fire break. Now, the dozes and graders that we're talking about are a much bigger piece of plant than the normal grader and dozer that you'll see out in the normal workforce.
Now, when did you leave on your holidays to go to Malakuta, wasn't it?
That's correct.
When did you leave?
I can't remember the time, but it was late Friday. It was getting towards dusk. And I'm not sure the exact time, but yeah, upon leaving, one of the last communications I believe I had was with Dean Sewers. He was the 1x7 supervisor that was still there with the trucks and the graders and dozes. And his comment to me was that everything appeared to be quiet. It was...
With quiet, with reference to what?
Reference to having... moving towards the mine.
The fire?
Yes. Sorry, the Hearns Oak fire.
Now, on the Saturday at Malakuta, did you get any information as to how the fire at Hearns Oak was progressing?
I can't remember exactly whether it was by the news reports or indeed a phone call, but I believe on Saturday that it was a terminology used contained.
Now, I want to ask you an apathetical question. Could I ask you to have a look at Exhibits, an extra seven, to Mr. Harkins' statement that might be shown? This is the email of the 8th of February. And possibly if you could, if you could be shown the model on the 3rd page. Now, this was a model that was emailed through to Mr. Roche, who's you know as being the liaison officer...
That's correct.
On Saturday evening. And you weren't sent this week?
No, that's correct.
Are you familiar with these Phoenix models?
I only learnt a lot about them yesterday.
At the time, on about the 8th of February, did you have any familiarity with the Phoenix models?
No.
Now, if that had been sent to you at that time with your knowledge, what would that image have depicted to you?
I would assume, not knowing the legend or all that, but there will be some activity of some sort. And if it came from the CFA, one would assume some fire activity would be in that area.
Okay. Now, if we could, if we go back two pages with the emails... And if on Saturday, you had have had an email to you that model by Mr. Roche and you were told that that had come in from the ICC as depicting the worst case scenario at 1am on Monday, would, given your state of knowledge at that time as to the state of the Hearns Oak fire as it was, would you have been inclined at that point in time on Saturday night to take any further action?
No, because looking at the timing of the email, it would be hard to do anything different. And with what that we'd set up and that I knew was in place, that was forecast for the Monday morning at 1am, I'm sure, if I remember rightly.
Monday at 1am, yes.
Yes. The equipment and tankers that we had over there, being the first response type machines that they are, I would deem that satisfactory at this point in time.
The model such as you understood it showing that the worst case scenario, the Hearns Oak fire, if it escaped its containment, could reach the northern batters of the mine, was that conveying any information to you as a possibility that you wouldn't already weigh on?
Not really, because when we, you've got the knowledge that there's a fire in Hearns Oak that's somewhere in that vicinity and you knew the winds that were forecast, you would think that we may have some issues there. Hence, I don't think it told me anything different because I didn't understand what the colours meant.
The email, if I could just take you up a bit, after Mr. Roche got it, at 6pm, he made the decision that he wouldn't distribute at that stage, would spend some time with Nick Dimitrios presumably, the next morning to get a better real time modelling as the days goes by. Do you have any comment on whether you think that was an adequate or proper approach?
Again, being night time and not understanding whether they would be able to get a model delivered, updated from that or an explanation, I would find that he would, getting it first thing the next morning, I would find that satisfactory.
I have no further questions of this business.
Very brief matters in reexamination, Mr. Dugan. Mr. Riordan asked you a number of questions about the detail of the fire preparedness plan that was issued. And you spoke about sprinklers going, wetting down being done overnight. Just to be absolutely clear, that was all wetting down of the operating part of the mine, was it not?
That's correct.
None of that was on the worked out batters?
That's correct.
So there was no wetting down of that area of the mine at all?
That's correct.
With the pipe network that was in place, was it possible to wet down that area of the mine?
With the pipe work that you have on the benches, the sprays when they're rotating hit the batters about 10 metres, 15 metres up a batter maximum. They don't go to the full height of the 20 metres high. But the reason that that wouldn't enter into consideration on that particular time was that our primary aim is to protect the infrastructure to maintain power supply to the state.
Understood. Now, you were asked some questions just a moment ago about this email with the Phoenix prediction map attached. And your answer was that you thought that it was appropriate for Mr. Roche to speak with Mr. Dimitrios the following day and get some better real time modelling the following day. Had you been at work, you would have wanted to be kept up to date with the information that Mr. Roche got from Mr. Dimitrios, would you not?
I would suggest that if I had have been at work, I would have been contacted.
Thank you. No further questions, may Mr. Dugan be excused if the board has nothing to speak for here?
Thank you.
The next witness is a community witness, Anthony Lawler. Mr. Lawler, would you please come forward?
Please state your full name.
Anthony John Lawler.
Please raise the Bible and repeat after me. I swear by Almighty God...
I swear by Almighty God.
...that the evidence I shall give...
The evidence I shall give.
...to this board of inquiry...
This board of inquiry.
...will be the truth...
Will be the truth.
...the whole truth.
The whole truth.
...and nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lawler. Can you please tell us your full name?
Anthony John Lawler.
You've made a statement to the inquiry that I understand you have there in front of you.
That's right.
It's a statement of 40 paragraphs with one attachment and that attachment is the submission that you've made to the inquiry. Have you read the statement recently?
A couple of nights ago.
All right. Are there any corrections that you would like to make to it?
No.
Is the statement true and correct?
Yes.
I tender that if I could. And Mr. Lawler, you told us a moment ago that you've been running the dairy farm that you live on for about 25 years. You weren't always a dairy farmer?
No, prior to that I was a surveyor with the SEC.
And that was at around the time of privatisation? Did you cross that barrier?
I left when it was privatised.
Right. And for about the same time that you have been running your farm at Willow Grove, you have been a volunteer with the Country Fire Authority?
Yes, correct, a little bit longer.
What brigade do you belong to?
Willow Grove.
And what, do you hold any position in that brigade?
First Lieutenant and the Secretary.
Until the 9th of February this year, had you had any previous experience fighting a coal mine fire in one of the open cut mines in this area?
I've been involved in a fire at Hazelwood Mine, I think it must have been 2006, is that correct?
2006, well, it says 2008 in your statement.
2008, sorry, yeah. And a number of small fires when I was with the survey group at Delorn and associated loading cuts.
All right, so aside from that larger fire that you fought or assisted with fighting in 2008, have you had any particular training with brown coal firefighting?
No.
How familiar are you with the layout of the Hazelwood Mine?
Because I was a surveyor, I hadn't quite a lot to do with the mine. But that was 25 years ago, so of course, it's changed quite dramatically in that time. But I have knowledge of the area.
Now, I'd like to take you straight to the 9th of February. You were called out for a smaller fire that morning?
Yes, we went to a fire lit by an arsonist at Rokeby and successfully contained that and returned back to the station.
And then there was a call to put together a strike team?
That's correct.
And you put your name forward?
I did, yep.
And tell us about the strike team that was assembled.
We had the Willow Grove Tanker, we had a Ford T-10 vehicle which was a Toyota four drive from New G, we had a Laura Tanker, a Trident Tanker, a Tallinn Lower Tanker. Is it one I've forgotten?
I think Erika, you mentioned that name?
Oh, sorry, Erika, yes, yep.
All right, and two of those tankers are from the Narakan Group that your brigade belongs to?
Erika and Willow Grove, yep.
And the other three were from another group?
Other groups, yes.
Other groups, all right. None of them from Morwell?
No.
So when and where did the strike team assemble?
We assembled at the Morwell Fire Station around about 6 o'clock.
And where were you directed to go?
Initially, we were told that we would be going out to Tyres. And then information came in that the Morwell Brquette Factory was under impact from fire and we were told that we were being redirected there. We were directed there following a Morwell Tanker as our lead vehicle, which took us down to the Morwell Brquette Factory. When we arrived there, it was evident that the Brquette Factory was not under attack. There was a lot of smoke and there was no actual flame. So then the Morwell Tanker then redirected us over the ridge, what I call a ridge, around to the mine perimeter. At that stage, the Morwell Tanker was called away and we were tasked to protect and put our fires in that area.
All right, so at this stage, you're still outside the perimeter fence of the mine?
Yes, we were, sorry, we were directed to a gate. I think that, I told me this, it was Gate 1A that we were told to get there, to meet there.
All right, and when you got there, you had some difficulty getting through?
I did, the gate, there was security fencing, eight foot security fencing and a large gate. We always carry bolt cutters on our truck to allow us to get access through most gates. But I believe possibly due to the quality of the steel used that we couldn't cut the chain or the bolt, or the pad bolt on that gate.
So you weren't able to cut your way in. We've been told by another witness that there's a swipe card held at the Morwell Fire Station that allows entry to the mine. Did the Morwell Tanker that had been with you have a swipe card?
I don't know, but there was no instrumentation or devices at that gate that would allow us to use of a swipe card. So it took some time for us to communicate that fact that we could not gain access at that point.
All right, and once it became clear that you couldn't gain access, what did you do next?
We were redirected back to another gate, which is possibly the gate that they're talking about, which is a boom gate type gate. And apparently that can be remotely operated from a control centre. Took quite a long time for us to be able to get that remotely operated, to allow that to open. And when it was opened, it was opened on a press button basis so that every truck that had to enter or exit the site had to press a button to go through individually. It was later rectified, but initially it was one truck at a time.
Now, Mr. Preziosso this morning talked about a slide gate. Does that match the description, or that description match the gate that you went through?
I thought it was a boom gate, it may have been a slide gate, it was a remote controlled gate.
Now, if we put up a satellite image of the mine, do you think you can point out the location of the gate?
I think so, yep.
All right, that's pretty much directly to the west of the Brquette Factory.
Yep.
So what time was it by the time you eventually gained access to the mine?
I couldn't tell you. It was, you probably, no, look, I wasn't, because of the activity that was taking place and the pressure we're under, I wasn't really keeping track of time. We didn't have a, often when we have a strike team, we have a penciler that's in the strike team, we just cover, but we didn't have a penciler so that sort of information wasn't taken down.
All right. When you were through the gate and inside the perimeter of the mine, was there anyone there to meet you and escort you?
No.
So where did you go?
We attacked, the fire was coming out of the, what I would call the eastern batters, coming over the top of the eastern batters onto the grasslands, impacting on structures and infrastructure in that area. So we just immediately set about trying to bring those areas under control.
All right, and what particular infrastructure was under attack at that, or under threat at that stage?
There was a, what I believe to be the rising conveyor that feeds the Morwell Brquette Factory that was being impacted from the grasslands onto that area. So we directed most of our activity into that area. We were again hampered by security fencing that we couldn't access or gain access through. So we were having to, the security fencing wasn't a long way away from the conveyor so we were able to get water onto the conveyor areas. We weren't, at that stage, we presumed it was an operational piece of machinery. It was only later, a couple of fellows happened to come down in a ute, mine personnel, Brquette Factory personnel, I don't know who they were. We asked them, the question, was this a vital piece of structure? And I said, yes, it's the main power supply to the Brquette Factory.
All right, now, we've also had some evidence about sprays that are installed along the conveyor belts that the conveyors that are throughout the mine. Was there any spray system operating at that time?
No sprays operating at the time that we were first there and we spent quite some time there containing that fire. And later on in the night, quite some time later, when we went back past those conveyor systems, there was evidence that sprays had been activated.
So, once you'd done everything that you could there, did you move to another part of the mine?
We basically patrolled all along that north east corner.
Again, could you indicate on the map where you were patrolling?
Basically, right through that area there.
And at this, at this point, you ran into some difficulty with your water supply?
Yes, we were struggling for water with the number of tanks we had. At that stage, there were one or two fellows. They weren't tasked to assist us, but they happened to be driving past and we grabbed them and we said, "Look, we need water. Can you give us any indication where we can access water for the tankers?" The initial point that we were directed to was up on this hill somewhere up here. But before we even got there, we were told that that water was unsuitable. This is from a mining employee, he said that the water was unsuitable. And they redirected us down to a, I think it was an ash pond or some area down this way that we were trying to access water out of. The flow weights were very poor. Took considerable time to refill our tankers. We always try to organise the tankers so that we're not all filling at once. There's always the tankers on the fire ground and it was a very slow process.
Once you had been able to replenish your water, where did you concentrate your efforts then?
Back in that north east corner.
That north eastern corner.
It was running across, it's a large number of buildings up on the ridge area. There's old, I believe they are conveyor galets that run through that area that were heavily timbered, which caused quite a lot of concerns. Again, we had a number of concerns with security fencing. All those buildings seemed to be individually occupied and they have security fencing around it and we again had trouble getting through that fencing. We were able to get so far through and couldn't access the other side.
Now, all the time you've been talking about, you've been up on the upper level of the mine. At any time, did you look into the open cut and take stock of what was happening in there?
Yes, reasonably early when we first got there, when the fire was coming out of the mine, we were up fairly close and looked out of the hedge and quite amazed at the extent of the coverage of the fire on the batters. of the coverage on the, of the fire on the batters.
Can you describe what you saw?
If anybody's seen the photos that have been in the press, it's like a vertical lava flow. It was quite, quite amazing extent. Extent, I've never seen a fire of that extent when I've been to previous mine fires. I do remark, remember remarking to people, I said it would take months to get this out. Yeah, as it turned out, I think that's what happened, yeah.
At some point, you were retasked to work along the northern side of the mine?
Yes, later on in the evening, I remember it was dark at all this time. And we were reliant a little bit on my knowledge of the roadworks. See, all the roadworks that we were working around, or the areas working around, were the old parts of the mine that I had a little bit of knowledge of. But we were given assistance of two mine employees. And they tasked us to head over to the northern batters, an area that basically runs between the Princess Highway and the mine. There's, I think the 66 KV power lines run through that area. And they wanted protection for those. So we accessed those spots. We were surprised that the access tracking to those areas was unmaintained. Look, it's always been graded since winter. So, caused some difficulty in getting, even though we have four-wheel drive tankers, we were severely impaired in getting in there in a reasonable time.
Now, at what, I know it was difficult for you to keep track of time, but at what stage in the evening into night was it that the mine personnel came to give you some direction?
I'd expect, I'd expect it would have been early the next morning.
And until that point, how were you receiving your direction? Where was it coming from?
They were through the strike team leader. And I believe he was in communication with, I think, Morewell Fire Station initially, but after that, I don't know.
So he was getting direction over the radio from somewhere else?
Yep.
And it wasn't until the early hours of the morning that you had direct contact with mine employees?
Yes, that's what I believe.
While you were working along the northern batters, could you see any suppression work being done inside the open cut?
Not, none that was evident to me.
No, you talk at one point in your statement about seeing two tankers driving down into the, onto the floor of the mine?
No, that was our tankers, two of our tankers were tasked to go down and assist in protection of, I think it was a pump or a substation for the mine. So, two tankers were sent, some tankers do have cabin protection for the crew and some don't. So we sent two tankers that have cabin protection for the crew down there.
Were you in that party or did you remain up on the grass level?
We've got a ROPS cabin on our tanker and we remained above grass level.
Right, and then you say in paragraph thirty-five of your statement that you spent the rest of the night really working around that north-eastern corner?
That's correct.
What were you able to achieve in the course of that night?
I think, in hindsight, I think we saved Morewell Brickett Factory, I think we saved the char plant, I think we saved all the buildings on the ridge, I think we saved the workshops and I think we saved part of township of Morewell. Because at all those points, there was major fire activity. And without our efforts, I believe it would have been unchecked and could still be going towards troubling today.
And at that point, the fire threat was coming directly out of the open cut mine?
That's correct, yep. The problem was that, because there was, could be no suppression on the fire in the open cut, it was continually putting out embers. So, it was just a continued source of fire.
And at what time were you able to knock off and hand over to another crew?
Roughly eight o'clock in the morning.
And did you return to the firefight that went on for another six weeks or so? And what were your reasons for that?
I, I've dealt with some government departments, some private plantation operators and some mine operators over the years. Whereas a CFA crew member at different times of the night or day or whatever, had a roster change, they've said, we haven't got personnel to come in to assist you. You'll have to stay here and finish off or clean up or continue things. So, my view, and it's only my personal view, is that we tend to get used because we're a volunteer firefighting force, it doesn't cost us anything. I turn out to every, every fire that Willa Grove Fire Brigade has as a member and go anywhere I'm required. But when it's, when the option is given to me to return, some places I'll make a decision not to return.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Do the members of the board have any questions? Oh, yes. We've had some evidence from Mr. Dugan, who you just saw complete his evidence, that the hydrant fittings within the mine are all supposed to be CFA compliant. Can you just elaborate on the difficulty you had finding hydrants that you could couple your tanker to?
Well, the main problem was basically, without assistance from mine personnel, we couldn't identify any hydrants or standpipes. There's no signage, no reflectors, no, you know, in a town, you usually have a wooden post and reflectors and indications of where your water points are. We could not find those points. There was one particular point, one of the first spots we went to, that whether it was a damaged thread or whether it was incompatible, we couldn't make use of that particular point. We managed to scramble water wherever, whenever we moved somewhere, we managed to get some water. We had to go through the power station at one stage and we found a standpipe there and we managed to refill. So we virtually used our resources as we could. But we did find, in one instance at least, that we could not make use of their standpipe. And the water flow, even though we did find standpipes and hydrants, the water flow was very, very poor.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Now, I've had no indication that anyone wants to ask Mr. Lawler any questions?
No, thank you. I'll ask a couple of questions, it won't be long. Just in relation to access, do you know why it was chosen to attempt to go in through the area in which you did in the first instance where you found the lock gate and you were unable to gain access?
We were directed there by the Morewell truck.
You followed the Morewell truck?
Followed, no, but I would presume, this is just a presumption, that because the fire was impacting Morewell, there was a lot of smoke and evidence of fire on the other side of the ridge. So, rather than return to station, they went round there. Now, I don't know whether they were acting on instructions or what.
And you don't know the reason why when that didn't work, they didn't go around to the main entrance and secure the entrance that way? You weren't part of those discussions?
I wasn't, no. That, that main entrance was an area that we had difficulty getting through.
The main entrance with the Boomgate?
Yeah, that's the one that I mentioned earlier that...
It's a manned entrance?
No, it wasn't manned, it was not, the entrance that we went through wasn't manned.
You indicated the area where there's Gate 1A, where there's intercom button. You press and ask for access.
Gate 1A didn't have any infrastructure, intercoms, SWAT cards?
Second gate, were you too?
Second gate had that infrastructure.
Where you indicated it was, my instructions are, that's Gate 1A and that's where you have intercom access?
No, I don't believe that to be the case.
You don't believe it to be the case that it's 1A? Or you don't believe it to be the case that it has intercom access?
The gate that we initially went to, which I believe to be 1A, did not have intercom access.
But the second one did?
The second one did.
That's, you want to say that's not the main gate?
Well, look, I don't know the terminology, I don't know, it was on the, on a main road that runs on the eastern side of the cut. So I don't, I don't know what the main gate or where the main gate is.
But certainly, when you did get entrance through that, that gate, you did it by intercom?
I don't, no.
No?
Don't know.
No, nobody met you at the gate? You say that when you were involved with the mine, there used to be scouts to assist you to enter?
That's correct, as a surveyor, we were called upon to be guides to lead fire trucks into the mine area.
Presumably, that there wasn't, there weren't days of catastrophic fires when those scouts were made available to you to enter?
I think, I think some of the fires that we experienced at Yewon aren't being reasonably big fires.
And they, you saying that when you were being surveyed or carried around as a surveyor, there weren't days of fire, were there?
Sorry?
So you were the scout, were you?
Yes, yes, I was a surveyor.
Yes.
Working for the SCC when they had fires, this is only applicable to my time when I was at Yewon Open Cut. When a fire was in the open cut and they brought in outside personnel, they tasked the survey people to act as guides to lead those fire trucks into the site.
Do you know whether any arrangements were made by, by your truck for scouts to be made available? In other words, whether you contacted the incident control centre and told them that you wanted a scout and you were coming through that entrance?
Not being the strike team leader, I'm not sure what he asked for or what he was trying to achieve. I know, our main concern was getting access into the mine initially.
And you thought you had gone through the main gate?
I, I believe, I don't know what the gate is called, but it was a gate that was operated by SWAT cars and had press buttons and stopped all access from that point inwards.
And you make mention of the lack of sprays on the conveyor, you noted them operating later though?
That's correct, yeah.
And you put that down to the fact there'd been a power failure?
No, I didn't put it down to anything. I just made a note that they weren't operating when we were there initially, that later on, they were.
But it certainly would be consistent with the fact there had been a power failure which had been restored.
I have no idea.
The track around the mine you made reference to suggests to you that you were operating off a secondary track because the main track was not accessible at that time because of the fire?
No, we were operating off a secondary track that had, that was running parallel to the asset that we were protecting.
And can I suggest to you that you note that the mine personnel knocked off at midnight and went home? Were you aware that another shift came on of mine personnel?
That wasn't relevant to this fire, that was on the previous 2008 fire.
I see, that's, that's your experience in 2008 when you became dissatisfied?
Sorry?
That was when you became dissatisfied, was it?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
May Mr. Lawler be excused, please? Now, I'll let Mr. Rosen have a turn.
The next witness is Mr. Jeremiah. Mr. Jeremiah, please come to the witness box.
Please state your full name.
Lawrence Robert Jeremiah.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm...
I do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm...
That the evidence I shall give...
That the evidence I shall give...
To this board of inquiry...
This board of inquiry...
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Afternoon, Mr. Jeremiah. Could you please confirm that your full name is Lawrence Robert Jeremiah?
That's correct.
And your work address is 71 Hawtham Street, Trelgany?
That's correct.
You're employed by the Department of Environment and Primary Industries, DEPI?
Yes.
Previously known as the Department of Sustainability and Environment?
That's correct.
And various other names over the years that we don't need to go into. Mr. Jeremiah, you've made a witness statement dated the 22nd of May 2014 for the purposes of the inquiry?
Yes, I have.
And the statement runs to some 107 paragraphs and has 12 attachments?
That's correct.
Have you read through a copy of your statement before giving evidence today?
Yes, I have.
And can you confirm for us, please, that the contents of the statement are true and correct?
Yes, they are.
At the end of the statement, please sit. Mr. Jeremiah, you've been asked to provide a statement and to give evidence before the inquiry because you were the incident controller at the Trelgany Incident Control Centre between the 8th and the 12th of February of this year?
That's correct.
And more specifically, the day shift incident controller? Now, I'll just ask you a little bit about your background and then I'll ask you some questions about your time during that period as the incident controller. Your formal title is Regional Business Manager with DEPI?
That's correct.
And you have responsibility for the Gippsland region? Is that right?
The business management component, yes?
Specifically budgeting workforce and corporate activities in the Gippsland region.
That's correct.
And you've held your current role since 2012?
Yes.
Probably more relevantly for our purposes, you have carried out fire management roles in various capacities for approximately the last 40 years of your working life?
That's correct.
You're a vastly experienced Level 3 Incident Controller, is it fair to say?
I'd say experience.
Okay, 25 years, doesn't count for vastly?
Many fires.
Many fires, indeed. And as we're aware, Level 3 is the highest level of accreditation for incident controllers. Is that right?
That's correct.
Formal qualifications, you have a Bachelor of Forest Science from the University of Melbourne and other qualifications listed at paragraph four of your statement.
That's correct.
Now, if I can take you, please, to the 7th of February of this year. As of the afternoon of the 7th of February, there was a relatively small fire burning in your patch, if I can call it that, known as the Hearn's Oak McDonald's Track Fire.
That's correct.
And throughout the course of the 7th of February, that is the Friday afternoon, that fire was being managed locally as a Level 1 incident?
That's my knowledge, I had no involvement with that fire on the Friday.
I understand that, but that is your understanding and I don't think it's controversial. What does manage locally mean as you use that term?
To my knowledge, the Trelgany Incident Control Centre was not functioning on the Friday?
Yes.
So the resources that were deployed to the incident were being managed by a local control facility and my assumption is that that was via the CFA.
In the afternoon or early evening of the 7th of February, you were asked by your employer, by DEPI, to fill the role of incident controller at the Trelgany Incident Control Centre from the 8th to the 12th of February?
Initially, for the 8th and 9th?
Yes.
So when I was approached on the 7th, I was only aware of the 8th and 9th as a consequence of the fire that went through to the 12th.
And you accepted that role? And so far as the, the Hearn's Oak McDonald's Track Fire, the one that had been, that was being managed locally as of the 7th of February, you were advised that if that increased in size, its management would be handed to you in your role as the incident controller at Trelgany on the 8th of February?
That's correct.
And as it turned out, that is in fact what occurred and you became responsible for the management of that fire on the 8th of February?
Yes.
Now, you used the expression... Now, you use the expression going to describe that fire on the 7th of February? And that's a term of art, if I can put it that way, within the, the emergency services. Can you perhaps just briefly explain to us what, what that means?
So within our terminology, we use primarily four definitions to demonstrate the status of a fire. Going means that there is still active fire which we need to deal with. Contains means that the fire is not spreading and potentially has limited risk, as in we're blacking out or doing something. Control implies that we believe the fire no longer poses a risk, but we may still be patrolling it and ultimately it changes to safe.
Safe means no further suppression action or patrols are necessary.
That's correct.
Just in relation to controlled, and I'm reading here, and we don't probably need to go for it, but the bushfire handbook, which is annexed to your statement, defines controlled as the complete perimeter of a fire is secured and no breakaway is expected.
That's correct.
Agree with that? I'll ask you a little bit about the Incident Control Centre at Trelgany and particularly the incident management team that was made available to you when you commenced your shift early on the 8th of February 2014. You make reference in your statement to the applicable J S O P, that's Joint Standard Operating Procedure. Is that right? It's joint in the sense that it applies to both DEPI and the CFA in terms of incident management readiness?
And other agencies.
And other agencies. And just by way of context, J S O P 2.03, which is the one you refer to and we can find it at attachment five of your statement, that is a standard operating procedure which was revised in response to the recommendations of the Black Saturday Royal Commission recommendations?
I believe so.
Yeah, all right. In any event, without necessarily going to it in detail, you summarise its effect in your statement? And I'll see if I can get this right. The Trelgany Incident Control Centre is designated under that standard operating procedure as the incident control centre for South and West, for the South and West Gippsland Cluster.
That's correct.
It's the primary incident control centre.
Yes.
And we can see, perhaps it would be useful to go to the document, which is attachment five. And if we could scroll down to page 0528, it's a map of Victoria. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jeremiah, but the purpose of this standard operating procedure is to ensure that that the fire agencies have in place at the commencement of days of particular fire danger, incident management teams at appropriate levels within different incident control centres?
That's correct. We cannot predict where a fire will start, so it's based on an assumption that we preposition people across the state throughout the landscape so that we can be as close to where our fire may start and can respond accordingly.
Perhaps we go to the table on the next page, please, which is schedule four. The way that these arrangements operate is that we can see, if we can, on the right hand side of that table, if we go to the top of it, please, we can, perhaps if it can just be increased in size. We can see heading fire danger rating at the top. Do you see that, Mr. Jeremiah?
Yep.
And then underneath that, we see four categories, very high, severe, extreme and code red.
That's correct.
For our purposes, both the 8th and the 9th of February in the Gippsland region were days of extreme fire danger rating.
Extreme certainly for Sunday.
Yes.
Saturday, parts of the state were extreme. But we were, we were being prepared for the Sunday, so we were operating on the assumption of extreme.
Understand. And then the table sets out what is required by way of, what level of preparedness is required for a given incident control centre where the fire danger rating is extreme?
That's correct.
Is that right? And so if we trace our way down that table towards the bottom of the page, we see for the Gippsland region that Trelgany is identified as the primary incident control centre. And then within the Trelgany Cluster, is that the right word?
Cluster is what you said.
Yep. We have Trelgany, Ellenbank, Leangatha, Yarim, Nugi and Erika. So far as Trelgany is concerned, if we trace along under the heading extreme, we see that the letter C appears and from the top of the page, we know that's a core IMT that is required to be in place on that day.
That's correct.
And for present purposes, if we look at Yarim, and I'll come back to Yarim in a moment, there's a little asterisk under that heading and from the top of the page, we see that's a base IMT is required to be in place in, in Yarim. Is that right?
I'm seeing C. Oh, sorry, asterisk, yes, wrong column. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. If it's a code red day, then it's C. But for, for our purposes, it's an asterisk, therefore a base IMT. Thank you. If we can leave that document and its complicated tables now and go back to the 8th of February, the, it's a long-winded way of, of making the, the short point, Mr. Jeremiah, that you make in paragraph 23 of your statement, that despite what was required by that table, apparently required, Yarim did not have in place a base IMT.
No, it did not.
Can you tell us why?
Resources were limited, given the other fires that were occurring across the state. And whilst we were being asked to execute a level of preparedness, we were aware that the resources were limited.
Specifically, Mr. Jeremiah, a base IMT, as it's defined in that SOP, and I won't go back to it, requires there to be in place an incident controller at either level two or, or level three.
That's correct.
And there was not an incident controller at either level two or level three in the Yarim Incident Control Centre on the, either the 8th or the 9th of February, is that correct?
Neither, as I were.
During the course of the 9th of February, the Sunday, which we'll come to in a moment, one of the fires that you had to deal with was a fire at Jack River.
That's correct.
And we heard evidence, Mr. Lapsley's best estimate was that Jack River was about 45 kilometres, I think he said, south west of Morewell. Does that, does that sound right?
That's correct order of magnitude, yes.
Thereabouts. That fire, at one stage on the 9th of February, threatened the town of Yarim, did it not?
That's correct. It was lit or started before the wind changed. So it was initially moving under the influence of the northwesterly wind, which had it moving directly towards Yarim.
And it was one of the fires, along with the fires burning in the Morewell region, that came under your, your control as incident controller, did it not, on the 9th of February?
That's correct.
So concerned were you about the risk to Yarim and the risk to life caused by the Jack River fire that you diverted some air resources from, from Morewell to deal with the Jack River fire?
Yes, so we had requested and were receiving additional air resources. The Jack River fire was the only one that was going and spreading at that time.
Yes.
It was threatening life, so that's where I prioritised the resources.
Obviously enough, the Jack River fire was taking up some of your time and, and thought as incident controller at the Trelgany Incident Control Centre during the course of the 9th of February?
As were other fires.
Indeed. If there had been in place a base IMT at Yarim, as required by the standard operating procedure, would that have relieved you of, of some or all of your incident control responsibilities for the Jack River fire?
Yes, it would.
Is that one of the matters that you're referring to in your statement? When you say, and this is paragraph 95A of your statement, answering the question, what could have been done better in relation to preparedness for and response to the Hurns Oak McDonald's Track, Morewell-Hurns Oak Fire, you say it would have been preferable to address the suboptimal level of resourcing available for the Trelgany IMT in the period 8th of February 2014 to 10th of February 2014? Is the situation with, with Yarim part of your concern there or is it separate?
I'm not seeing that as, sorry, 95A?
95A.
Sorry, I'm reading 94A.
Sorry. 94A is a, 94 is a longer list of things that went well and I'll come to that, but for the moment I'm concentrating on something that didn't go as well as it could have.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Ideally, at all of the other incident control centres in the Trelgany Cluster, we would have had skilled people able to support a response to any fire that started.
Because it wasn't just Yarim that was deficient in this regard. You've, you've listed in paragraph 23, Ellenbank, Leangatha, Nugi and Erika, all should have had base IMTs but didn't.
That's correct.
Yeah. There was another issue, wasn't there, with resourcing of your IMT? And that is, you didn't have available to you in Trelgany all of the constituent parts of a core IMT as required by the SOP.
That's correct.
Paragraph 24 of your statement, you list what's required by the SOP for a core IMT. As I understand your evidence, you didn't have an aircraft officer as required by paragraph D?
No, the aircraft officer was attached to the regional control centre.
I was going to ask you that. So there was a workaround for that deficiency? And was that of any practical effect, as far as you were concerned, that you didn't have your own aircraft officer in your IMT?
For the Saturday and the early part of Sunday, given we had no active fire, the arrangements were adequate. Once fires broke out, it was just an extra step in the chain of managing the resources.
If I can go back to the, the 8th of February, if I could, please. You were confronted with, with the McDonald's, the Hurns Oak McDonald's Track Fire? And you've set out in your statement, starting at paragraph 29, the events of, of the 8th of February, that you note there that based on weather predictions for the following day, you made a request for more, more resources to be made available to you through your regional controller, who I think was Mr. Russell. Is that right?
That's correct.
What resources were you seeking from Mr. Russell?
Three strike teams and two large helicopters.
In relation to strike teams, you were probably in, in the hearing room a moment ago when Mr. Lawler was giving evidence about his strike team. Is that what you're talking about? Is it four tankers and a, and a lead vehicle?
Five tankers and a command vehicle.
Five tankers and a command vehicle. And fully crewed tankers means what? Four, four firefighters per tanker? Is that right?
It can vary, but of that order.
Okay. You were wanting three such teams prepositioned in the Latrobe Valley, as well as the two helicopters, which I'll come to in a moment. As it turned out, two strike teams were made available to you?
That's correct.
And when was that resource provided? I think you actually deal with it. They were prepositioned on the Saturday evening?
Yeah, so the request was that they arrive on the Saturday and have an opportunity to rest so that they could work all of Sunday without there being any significant fatigue issues.
Yeah. And the availability of that resource, fresh and ready to go first thing Sunday, was crucial, given the weather forecast for Sunday?
That's correct.
You explain that based on your extensive experience of fires in Latrobe Valley, you wanted what you described as an aggressive approach taken to the containment of the Hurns Oak McDonald's Track Fire?
Yeah, so we're back to Saturday.
Yes.
So I assume controls are maybe between 7:00 and 9 o'clock?
Yes.
It was apparent from some aircraft photography that I observed that there was still fire burning in the gullies, particularly on the south west section.
Yes.
Which I was concerned was not abating declining at the rate I would expect, given the level of resources we had working on it, which made me concerned that we may not have it fully secure by the Sunday.
Yes.
So I instructed the operations officer to adopt an aggressive approach, which meant getting more equipment, heavy plants, helicopters and so on, in order to contain it if we could, fully and wholly before the Sunday.
Your assessment was you needed old fashioned boots on the ground, doing blacking out work inside the perimeter of the fire, is that right?
Yes, and, and heavy plant to deal with large trees that were burning and so on.
Yes.
Could I just clarify whereabouts it was, as you saw the smoke on the Saturday?
On the, so there was some gullies, no, there's some gullies in the south west portion of the original fire.
Southwest?
Yes.
I think we heard yesterday that the area within the containment line was somewhere in the vicinity of 150 hectares. Does that sound about right?
The maps I have with the incident action plan is showing about 125 hectares, so.
All right. So that sort of region. Your answer to his honour's question is that you wish to concentrate your resources in the southwest part of the, that area?
Yeah, so the photography that was taken at or around lunchtime on the Saturday?
Yes.
Showed a significant amount of smoke coming from the southwest and negligible smoke in the northeast.
We'll come to it in a moment, but as it turned out, the breakout was in fact in the northeast area on the 9th of February.
That's my understanding.
Yes. Perhaps we'll come to, come to discuss that in a moment. As far as the two helicopters.
Can I just interrupt? Only because I've got that map in front of me, of course it doesn't ideally, that's the ultimate. When one talks about the southwest, you mean, if you like, the western portion? It's a kind of rectangle. But it, so it has a, a point to the west, a point to the south, if you might. When you meant the southwest, you meant that general area that's shown there and that, is it some extreme boundary?
We're just bringing it up on the screen, I don't know, it might, might be easier for the witness.
It's, it's a little intriguing only because the fire came from the opposite end.
Yeah, that's right. We held the bit that concerned us and lost the bit elsewhere. Coming?
It's F S C.
S S one.
That's it? That might assist you. Now, of course, this is showing the area ultimately burnt. Are you able to indicate with the ruler, the, that area of some 120 hectares that you were talking about? Can that be identified there?
This grid should pretty much be the original fire.
So something of a rectangle and it's the westernmost area.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. I think I'd asked you about the request for the strike team resource. There was also a request, you told us, for two heavy helicopters to be provided and we. we have heard that whilst you got the helicopters, they didn't arrive until about midday on the 9th.
That's correct.
What was your preference in terms of their time of arrival?
Ideally, we would have had them arrive on the Saturday with some capacity to work in the latter hours, daylight hours of the Saturday.
Yes.
We did activate or reactivate the small helicopter that is initially managed by Hancock's Plantations. It was reactivated on the Saturday around 1pm, and it was doing some work, but it's very small and not entirely effective, so we asked for the additional aircraft.
And were you given an explanation for why they weren't made available to you at the time, at your preferred time?
No.
I think in fairness, Mr Lapsley did give evidence on Monday that it was a question of competing resources, which is a common enough problem, I guess, that you faced, Mr Jeremiah.
Certainly, given the number of fires that were present across the state at the time.
Whatever the explanation, it would have been a very useful resource to you, preferably late Saturday, but certainly early on the Sunday morning.
That's correct. Particularly by the time they arrived, they were deployed to Jack River.
Sorry, you further deployed them to Jack River to deal with the emergency that arisen there?
That's correct.
Now, just before leaving events of the 8th of February, I want to ask you about paragraph 37 of your statement, where you set out the four steps that you took as incident controller to address the Hurnz Oak-McDonald's Track fire. There was adopting the aggressive approach, which you have spoken of. There was the request for additional resources, which we've also discussed, the consideration of what other preparatory works could be done. And I was going to address that first. You say there were limited opportunities to do anything further in paragraph 39. Could you just explain why there were limited opportunities to conduct any other preparatory works in the area?
So a lot of the terrain between Hurnz Oak and Morewell is open grassland, so it provides adequate access for fire responding vehicles. There's the highway, the main highway from Hurnz Oak to Morewell, but there's also the Stresleki Highway and other roads. The roads in themselves form a barrier to the spread of fire and provide access and aggress for the responding fire appliances. So given that level of accessibility, I wasn't... I came to the conclusion that there was not a lot more I could do in terms of trying to prevent the spread of fire.
Thank you. Now, the fourth specific step you took in relation to addressing the fire was set out in 37d to inform and alert major industries, including the mine operators, and by that you're referring to the three open cut mines in the area?
That's correct.
The brands of each of those, through the Central Gippsland Essential Industries Group Incorporated. We've heard a deal of evidence about that body. Can you just explain, from your experience in this area, the role it plays in being a conduit for information between the fire agencies and its members, including the mine operators?
Yes, so as I understand it, the group has a regular forum, and they discuss a number of the risks and threats that may be posed to the collective industries in the Latrobe Valley, and they look at how they can provide individual and mutual support to the response of those industries if required.
Now, I don't think it's controversial, but both GDF Sewers and its security contracted diamond protection are members of the group, as is the CFA. Is that the position? Is DEPI also a member, or does it not have that status? Do you know?
We participate. The forum we would be involved in more formally would be municipal emergency management planning committees. I think I've got the right terminology there.
Just whilst we're on the topic of that, I'll get you to jump forward to paragraph 105 of your statement, please. Do you have that in front of you, Mr Jeremiah?
Yes, I do.
You say there that your primary contact with the Hazelwood Mine operators during the three days, 8, 9 and 10 of February, was through Nick Demetrius, who is the representative of CGEIG Inc. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. And more specifically, on the Saturday, Mr Demetrius, who chairs that body and is also a member of the Regional Emergency Management Team, was at the Trelrogan Incident Control Centre. Is that right?
Yes, he came in, received a personal briefing and was provided with some documents.
Yeah. Not just any documents, he was provided with some documents that we've already heard a good deal of evidence about. We might just quickly go to them. There are an extra 12 of your statement, and they are two Phoenix prediction... I'm not sure if maps is the right word, Phoenix predictions. If they could just be brought up, please. That's the first of those. Do you have that in front of you? Hurnz Oak run 0900, 9th of February 2014?
Yes, that's correct.
You are no doubt familiar with this type of product, the Phoenix prediction, Mr Jeremiah?
Very familiar with the product.
Yes.
Don't fully understand the model itself.
Okay. But I suspect you understand it well enough to help us understand what we're looking at here. Can you help us understand what this means, 0900, 9th of February 2014?
Yes, so to run the model, you need to select a time?
Yes.
At which the fire commences. So the time in this case was 0900, so we've used the model to do a prediction of what might happen should the fire escape at 9 o'clock in the morning. The different coloured pixels relate to fire intensity, not to time, and I understand you have had a demonstration around Phoenix, and you can see how it progresses over time. The model we were running times added around two hours after escape, so this is the potential impact zone we're looking at around that time.
Just so that I understand you, you're saying that the software requires the operator to select a time, to designate a time of a predicted breakout of the fire, and then the Phoenix product gives you a prediction of the likely spread of the fire if it was to break out at that time?
That's correct.
In this case, the operator's chosen 0900 hours on the 9th of February?
Yes.
As the breakout time? And then, it doesn't mean, does it, that this is a prediction of the spread of the fire as at 0900 hours?
No, not at all.
No.
It's the decision support tool. It helps us run some what-if scenarios. So it helps us make some decisions about how we might increase our resources or relocate our resources should something happen at that time.
So they're obviously traps for the uninitiated, looking at a document like this. It requires some understanding along the lines that you've just explained, to get the full benefit of looking at this document.
That's correct. It's simply, in its simplest form, it gives you an area that may be impacted, and you can see by spot fires or by the main fire.
Yes. If we look at the second document, and from the explanation you've just given us, we can assume, can we, that on the occasion of this document, the data that's been entered is a predicted breakout at 11:00 hours on the 9th of February? And we see a very different fire spread. How can you explain that? That we see fire going north-east into the Yalorn Open Cut?
So again, the Phoenix model assumes no suppression effort?
Yes.
So it is a worst-case scenario. With the breakout at 11 o'clock, the finger to the north-east?
Yes.
This one? Is fire spread after the wind change?
I see. So in the event of an earlier breakout, the fire would be hardly impacted by the predicted wind change at all?
That's not correct. The model only runs for a fixed time.
I see.
So in the 0900 model run, it timed out before the wind change.
Okay. Can you tell us, looking at it, when it timed out?
No.
No, all right. About some time, I think the forecast wind change was early in the afternoon. It actually arrived at about 1:30pm, I think, is the...
Around 2:30 is my understanding.
2:30. What's the basis of that understanding, Mr Jeremiah?
When the main fire changed direction.
Now, just before leaving those Phoenix projections, what you say in your statement is they were provided to Mr Demetrius when he was in the Incident Control Centre on the 8th of February 2014?
Nick was provided with some information on the afternoon of the Saturday.
Right.
He came in again on the Sunday morning, and we had another discussion.
I see.
I can't confirm which ones were given to him on which days.
All right. Just so that we get this clear, paragraph 106, you say that on the Saturday, Mr Demetrius was briefed, was provided with copies of the Phoenix predictions, which clearly showed that should the containment break, spotting was likely to occur in Hazelwood, in the Hazelwood Mine. So you're not saying that he was specifically given these two, you just don't know?
There were other ones?
Yes.
I've seen earlier today one that was relevant to us on the Saturday.
Yes. And so do you say that's what was given to him, or you're assuming that that's probably what he received?
I'm confident he received copies of all of them.
Yes.
I don't have the time that these ones were given to him.
All right. Based on your experience, what was your expectation of what he would do with those in terms of distribution within the group that he chaired?
Certainly, my expectation is that he would communicate to all of his members.
Yes.
This was as much to substantiate our concerns at how real the risk was to all of the industries in the valley.
Yes.
And our discussion with him was to the effect that those entities needed to take this threat seriously.
Would it be fair to say, Mr Jeremiah, that from your disc... Did you personally talk to Mr Demetrius on the 8th and 9th of February?
Yes, on both days.
And had you had dealings with him over a lengthy period of time prior to that?
Yes, I worked with Nick during the Churchill fires in 2009.
Right. Where there were similar issues of threats to infrastructure in the Latrobe Valley?
Yes, that's correct, impacting Loyang that time.
Yes. And you, I take it, had every confidence that he would pass on that information to those that needed it?
Yes, so I had discussions with him in my role as incident controller.
Yes.
Peter McHugh, the planning officer, provided him with all the detailed documents.
Now, if we can... I'm sorry to jump you around like this, but if we can just close off the events of the 8th of February, please. At paragraph 50 of your statement, you refer there to allocating additional resources to the south-west sector of the fire, and you've already explained why that was the area that you thought it was necessary to apply additional resources to. And at paragraph 51, you describe your assessment during the course of the 8th of February of the likelihood firstly of a breakout of the fire, and in the event of a breakout, the likely consequences, where the fire would travel to.
Yes.
And you refer to assessing two things. Firstly, that the probability of a breakout you considered to be low, a low risk, but the consequences in the event that the risk occurred were highly catastrophic. Can we deal with the low-risk issue first? Why did you assess the risk as low?
Primarily because the original spread of the fire was contained, as in there was a perimeter containment achieved on the Friday, that we had Friday night, all of Saturday and all of Saturday night before the severe, before the extreme conditions of Sunday, and we had some resources available to us, and we were actively and aggressively working on containment.
Was your assessment of the risk as low one that took into account an optimistic view of the additional resources that you'd requested, particularly the two helicopters?
It was.
And you explain, and I think we all well understand, why you assess the consequences as being catastrophic, given the township of Morewell and the mines, and their paper mill and other vital industries in the region?
And in particular, that given its proximity, should the fire break out, the available time for us to respond and suppress the fire would be limited before it impacted. In other words, we had a very narrow window in which to react, and if we weren't successful in that window, then the impacts would be relatively immediate.
And that's a function of the distance between the fire area and the township of Morewell and the mine firstly?
And the forecast rate of spread associated with such time.
And the forecast rate of spread, that's right. If we can turn then to the situation on the 9th of February. You commenced your day shift as incident controller at 700 hours, and at paragraph 61, you note that within a relatively short time, or at least through the course of the day, there were a number of other new fires that came under your control as incident controller. The Jack River fire already broke out at 10:45. The Drivville fire, which we've heard quite a bit about, started in the afternoon at about 2:30. The Jindavik fire, what sort of drain on your resources was occasioned by the Jindavik fire?
The Jindavik fire was not directly managed by me or the team I was managing. However, we were asked on several occasions what was happening. The Jindavik fire has a number of other names, Brandy Creek. It was managed locally out of Drum by local CFA resources. But because it took some time to control, it was somewhat of a niggel in that it was there, we knew it was there, we weren't managing it, but we were being asked questions about it, and were we going to assume control of it?
And what about the Gifford West for completeness, should I ask you about that?
Likewise, a fire that started later in the day?
Yes.
Again, managed locally by local resources. Again, they were able to control that fire locally, which was good, but again, we were being asked, what's happening? Are we assuming control of it? And there were other fire reports which were found not to be fires.
All right. In paragraph 65, you refer to your decision to divert the two helicopters that ultimately were made available to you round about midday on the 9th of February, to divert them on to deal with the Jack River fire. And you say that it reduced the number of aircraft available to actively work on containing the Hurnz Oak-McDonald's Track fire. Are you able to put numbers on that? What was available to you once those two helicopters went to Jack River?
Throughout the Sunday, pretty much from the beginning of the Jack River fire, more and more resources were being made available to us, both in terms of aircraft and local responding resources. I think the best I could do is give you the summary of all of the resources that were ultimately in and around the Latrobe Valley by the end of Sunday. Would be, I would need to source some additional data to let you know that when each individual aircraft was allocated to us and when it arrived.
Unless the board particularly wants that information, what we have at the moment is Mr Lapsley's evidence that there were, I think, 14 aircraft in the Gippsland is Mr Lapsley's evidence that there were, I think, fourteen aircraft in the Gippsland region. If further details required, I'll be guided by the board on that. If we want to put Mr Jeremiah to that work? No, we won't. We don't want to trouble you there, Mr Jeremiah.
But, Mr Redden, may I just seek a point of clarification?
Certainly.
So, in paragraph sixty-one, Mr Jeremiah, you're suggesting that the Drivville Fire commenced at fourteen thirty. So, I could be remembering incorrectly, but I thought what I'd heard, other evidence that it started about one thirty. So, I'm just wondering where the source of your data is coming from?
It certainly was after the wind change. To get an exact time, my understanding is it was reported to Esther via triple zero. So, if you wanted definitive time, I would suggest that source.
And the source of your data in your statement, is that just from your own notes or is there some other...
Yes.
Okay. So, you're right, there's no record of the actual fire timing in your incident control?
I can check my log.
I don't want to waste particular time, we can come back to that if we...
The important bit, it was after the wind change, which dictated the direction of...
From the time of the commencement of that fire, it spread in a north-eastly direction, didn't it?
That's correct, under the influence of the south-westly wind.
Paragraph sixty-seven of your statement, you note that there was a breakout of the Hearn's Oak McDonald's track fire at approximately one thirty in the afternoon on the ninth of February. And as you previously said, the breakout occurred not in the south-west area where you... Where your planning told you it was most likely to break out, but in fact, in the north-east corner. Couple of questions about that. Are you able to assist the inquiry with understanding why the breakout occurred in the north-east area rather than the south-west? Have there been any investigations of that, as far as you're aware?
Not to my knowledge.
From your own knowledge of the fire, are you able to assist us at all as to why that occurred?
I did get some information anecdotally from crews that were on the ground that, again, there was a gully with vegetation in it that was burning. As I understand, it ultimately led to some members crossing the control line.
Within a relatively short period of time of the breakout, there was spotting from that fire into the town of Morewell?
That's correct.
Is that right? Specifically west of Latrobe Road? Now, I'm going to ask you some questions about the allocation of the resources that were available to you through the course of the afternoon after the fire broke its containment lines. You had an operations officer working as part of your team in the incident control centre?
Yes, I did, Brad Fisher.
Mr Fisher. And was it your decision or his or a combination of the two as to tactical responses to the spread of that fire after it broke out?
The minute-to-minute tactical deployment of resources on the ground is managed by the operations officer and the sector commanders.
So, that means Mr Fisher and those reporting to him in the incident control structure, is that right?
That's correct.
What about at a more strategic level? So, deciding whether to devote resources to protect the township of Morewell as compared to providing resources to deal with the looming emergency in the Hazelwood Mine? Is that also a decision that occurs at that operations officer level?
No. So, the duties of the incident controller are defined and I've provided that information. And the priorities are clearly defined by the Fire Services Commissioner, listing life and property first, alerting communities second and critical infrastructure third. So, I was certainly actively influencing and leading the decisions and the deployment of resources placed around those priorities, both between Jack River and Morewell and in and around Morewell.
You say at paragraph forty-one of your statement that, to the best of your knowledge, having alerted the mine operators of the looming risk, no request was made by them to the Traugan ICC for resources or assistance during that period. I want to ask you a little bit about that because the inquiries heard other evidence about communications from the mine to the Traugan ICC during the course of the afternoon. Firstly, at the... Withdraw that. Did anyone from the mine contact you as incident controller during the course of the afternoon about the fire in the mine?
I had discussions with Mark Nash from Yalorn. I had no direct conversations with anybody from Morewell Mine.
What position did Mr Nash hold at Yalorn?
I'm not aware of his exact title, but he was dealing with the response to the areas that were on fire within the Yalorn Works area.
Did Mr Nash make any request of you for CFA or for fire resources to assist him?
He did at various times. My first conversations with him related to the potential spot fire that had occurred in their works area as a result of the fire on the Friday.
Yes.
My inquiries concluded that there was no risk or threat or going fire remaining after the Friday. But certainly after the fire broke out on the Sunday, the southwestern portion of their works area, which again is their overburdened area, there was fire. And again, after the wind change and when the fire was spreading past the western edge of Morewell and towards the pulp mill, there was also potential for it to spread into the working face of the Yalorn Mine.
And do you know if resources under your control attended to any fire at the Yalorn Mine on the afternoon of the ninth of February?
There was a limited amount of work undertaken on the overburdened area.
Yes.
It was not spreading rapidly. We were concentrating our resources in and around Morewell.
Yes.
And once the urban area was protected, we continued to work the perimeter past the pulp mill. And then it wasn't until Monday that we ultimately got to complete a perimeter around the bit that was threatening Morewell.
At what point on the afternoon, if you're able to tell us, did you consider that the threat to the township of Morewell, particularly the houses in the vicinity of Latrobe Road, had passed?
I would need to consult my notes, but very late in the afternoon towards the end of my shift, there was a report of the fire having crossed north of Latrobe River, suggesting it was still spreading. That was later discounted and that was about the time that my shift ended.
There's evidence before the inquiry in the form of a log maintained by a contractor at the Hazelwood Mine, that there was contact with the CFA specifically... Oh, I don't know if it is specific, whether it's the incident control centre or not, but certainly contact with the CFA at thirteen forty or one forty in the afternoon. Are you aware of any contact being made to the CFA at that time?
I'm not aware of anything.
All right. More specifically, there is a note of a discussion with Peter McHugh at fourteen forty-three hours, so just before quarter to three in the afternoon. You already told us Mr McHugh is the planning officer working for you.
That's correct.
Were you aware of a discussion between anyone from the Hazelwood Mine and Mr McHugh at that time or any other time on the afternoon?
Not specifically, no.
You don't say it didn't happen, you're just saying it wasn't brought to your attention, is that right?
That's correct.
There were several meetings of your incident management team during the course of the day on the ninth of February, were there not?
Yes, so we met every two hours.
That's standard practice for an incident management team?
It is for my management teams. I would rather meet more frequently for a shorter period of time.
Right. We know, and we've been... The inquiry's been provided with a large number of documents containing the minutes of incident management team meetings, but apparently there are no minutes of the meetings on the ninth of February. Is that your understanding of the position?
There's no formal typed minutes taken by a minute taker.
Right.
If you wanted evidence of the meetings, you would need to consult each of the logbooks of each of the IMT members.
Well, we've got one of those IMT members here, haven't we? And you have your logbook with you?
Yes.
Have you checked it to see if there is any reference to any request from the Hazelwood Mine operators for assistance with the fire on the afternoon of the ninth of February?
I've read it several times, I'm not aware of any requests.
Okay. Have you inquired of other members of your incident management team as to whether, particularly whether Mr McHugh has such a record?
No, I've made no inquiry.
Presumably, Mr McHugh's logbook could be provided to the inquiry?
If required, is my understanding.
Okay. That's something he has in his possession presumably, is it? Or is it held at the office?
It varies a bit. Some people use a logbook that stays at the incident control centre. Others retain their logbook but provide electronic copies in our electronic storage system.
All right.
So, one or the other would be available.
All right. Can I ask that you make inquiries about the availability of that and through the Victorian Government solicitors, see if that can be provided to us, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Now, we've heard some evidence about an aircraft operating in the vicinity of the mine, dropping some retardant at... See if I've got the time here, it was around about three PM. Were you aware that there was an aircraft operating, dropping retardant was on the northern batters at about that time?
I'm not aware of any specific aircraft drop. Aircraft need to operate in clean air, they can't operate in the smoke. There's an air attack supervisor who's in a small helicopter who has the visibility. It's their role to do the tactical tasking of where aircraft can operate most effectively and most efficiently.
If the fire on the northern batters of the mine, as seems likely, was initiated by spotting from the breakout of the Hearn's Oak McDonald's track fire, then any activity by an aircraft there would be just part of their general role in relation to containment of the breakout?
That's correct. So, our priority is to try and limit its spread through the landscape and protect assets that are under threat, that are ahead of fire. So, whilst we were aware that some fire had entered the mine, our priority was to deal with the life and property around Morewell and to limit its further spread and further impact on other assets.
Your period as incident controller ended at the end of your shift, seven PM on the ninth of February?
That's correct.
And you commenced a further shift on the day shift of the tenth, following day?
Yes.
And at that point in time, the... The... What had started as the Hearn's Oak McDonald's track fire had been renamed the Hearn's Oak Morewell Fire? Is that... Have I got that terminology right?
Morewell Hearn's Oak.
Morewell Hearn's Oak Fire. And until a separate incident control structure was established for the Hazelwood Mine, as of the tenth of February, the mine fire still fell under your jurisdiction, did it not, in the ICC?
That's correct.
On the tenth? If I can just briefly ask you about your activities on the tenth, please. We've been provided with an incident shift plan, or the inquiry's been provided with an incident shift plan for the tenth of February. Was there such a document for the ninth of February, for the day that we've been...
Not talking about, not to my knowledge.
All right. Perhaps if the shift plan for the tenth of February could please be brought up? Sorry, Mr Jeremiah. You're identified in this shift plan as the incident controller and that's consistent with the evidence you've already given, isn't it, Mr Jeremiah?
That's correct, yes.
Turn to page five of the plan, please. The bottom of that, just a little bit further down, please. Do you see under the heading 'Safety' is a dot point, 'State Controller has reinforced the need to appoint a safety officer to incident management teams'.
Yes.
That reference to 'State Controller' is a reference to the Fire Services Commissioner?
Or his delegate.
Right. In any event, that's a standard note in incident shift plans?
That's correct.
Is it not? There wasn't a safety officer, was there, for the incident management team under your control on the tenth of February?
No, there wasn't.
It was a requirement, was it, under the standard operating procedure three point oh four, that there be a safety officer?
Yes, that's correct.
And this, once again, was the subject of a recommendation in the Bushfire Royal Commission? Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Can you help us with understanding why there wasn't a safety officer in that incident management team?
Our safety officers are often dual-qualified as operations officers or incident controllers. So, again, it's that issue of limited resources.
Yes.
I could have had a safety officer but then been obligated to go without an operations officer. So, it was a matter of prioritising of resources.
I see. Without wanting to labour the point, a safety officer is intended under the SOP to be a dedicated role that doesn't have operational responsibilities.
That's correct.
That's under the AIMS structure, is it not?
That's correct.
Any other thing I need to ask you about in that incident action plan is... The incident objective on page four. Do you see the first dot point there? To have fires contained by eleven hundred hours on the eleventh of February twenty fourteen. Was that the objective? Did that include the fire in the mine? I suspect not, but you tell us.
Generally not. So, Steve Warrington arrived late on the Sunday.
Yes.
Prior to my shift finishing. He was having a number of conversations with Brian Russell and the regional control team. When I commenced shift on the Monday, what had been put in place overnight was that the mine would be run as a separate division.
Yes.
Its own division commander. And as of twelve hundred hours on the Monday, this formal... Steve Warrington is formally appointed as a deputy regional controller.
Yes.
With responsibility for the mine. So, in the morning of the Monday, whilst the formality, you know, the documents hadn't been formally signed, there was certainly a lot of discussion and the firefight in the mine was largely being led directly between Steve Warrington and Peter Lockwood.
Yes.
Which I was comfortable with, given all the rest of the fire in the landscape that I was still dealing with. So, I guess this incident action plan relates to the broader fire in the landscape. My understanding is there were some other objectives specifically for the mine that Peter was working with.
I understand. In fairness to you, Mr... I understand. In fairness to you, Mr. Jeremiah, whilst the document on its face clearly incorporates the fire in the mine, it was the case, was it not, as you've described, that on the 10th of February, there was a process of establishing a completely separate incident control structure for that fire? With ultimately Mr. Warrington at the apex of that structure?
That's correct.
And then from that time onwards, you had no further controlling responsibility for the fire in the mine?
My understanding is that from the morning of Tuesday, the 11th, the separate incident management team was fully functioning.
Yes. And so the answer to my question is yes, you had no further involvement? Thanks very much for your evidence. Excuse me. Yes, I think I should tender the shift plan for day shift, day shift, 10th of February 2014? Yes, I think that's it would be preferable. Just for the transcript, the code for that is FSC 0006.001.001. I've no further questions for Mr. Jeremiah. I understand that Mr. Redden has about half an hour for Mr. Jeremiah.
I think you've given evidence that you took over on the Saturday morning at about 7am in your statement, but I think you said it might have been 7am or 9am, is that right?
Somewhere between 7am and 9am.
And as I understand, Rubens, you've given that there was no incident shift plan prepared for that change-up, is that correct?
Nothing was handed to me at that time.
And you've just been given evidence about an incident shift plan that you prepared on the 10th of February, and one that you've signed off, is that correct?
That I signed?
If you could have a look at tab two, is that your signature?
This is for night shift on the 10th?
Yes.
Yes.
That's your signature?
Yes.
Yes. So that's on the 10th. You completed one and signed one off. That's on the, that's signed by the incident controller who's completing the shift, correct?
Yes, so normally the controller completing the shift would approve the shift plan for the next coming shift.
And did you query why you weren't provided with one on Saturday, the 8th?
I did, but as the fire was not at that time run through the Torovens and Control Centre, the documentation would have been elsewhere. So we set about collecting information we needed via different lines of communication.
You might explain that to me. You were taking over as the incident controller for this fire?
That's correct.
And when you arrived, was the previous incident controller there?
No, they weren't.
Where are they?
I don't know where it was being run from. I'm not sure whether it was Moorwell Fire Station or New Borough Fire Station, or some other location. It was being run locally.
Been run locally somewhere around Morwell?
Somewhere around the fire. That's what I'm saying. Morwell, New Borough, I don't know.
And when you signed off at the end of your shift at about 7pm on Saturday night, did you complete an incident shift plan then?
Yes, I did.
And do we have that?
I don't know.
Can that be produced?
Yes, should be able to be.
Okay.
I say, should the documents were all, to my knowledge, left at the incident control centre, then not in my control.
And so when you took over, you had to go about getting information about the fire, is that right?
That's correct.
And how did you go about doing that?
You try and contact the people who were involved. The planning staff reporting to me would make other inquiries. There are electronic data storage drives that we can access and interrogate that are linked statewide. So potentially from any computer, we can seek any incident action plan from any incident.
So when you arrived, and you have no idea of what you're dealing with with the Hearn's Oak Fire at all?
I received a quick briefing from Russ Sullivan, who is the agency commander in the regional control centre.
What did he tell you about it?
He told me that the perimeter was contained and that resources were due back there on the Saturday, and that the fire was still burning internally.
And that meant that it was a level-one fire, is that correct?
On the Friday, as it was managed locally, my understanding is it was a level-one fire.
And for your purposes, do you treat it as a level-one fire when you take over control of it?
Given that we were a core IMT preparing for a level-three incident, and given my assessment of its potential risk and consequences, I operated as if it was a level-three fire. I'm not sure exactly when it was reclassified. I can't give you the time that was reclassified.
By you? It was reclassified by you?
It would normally be reclassified by me.
Do you know whether it was reclassified by you from level-one to level-three?
No, I don't.
Are you sure it was reclassified from level-one to level-three?
I am, but I don't have that time reference in my log. It could have been agreed at one of the IMT meetings.
Is a reclassification nothing more than a thought bubble that you might have? Or does it require some objective step?
Can I refer you to the definitions of the level-one, level-two, three incidents?
No, I don't have the definitions. So what I'm trying to work out is how one is actually reclassified, whether it's a document, or whether it's a statement, or whether it's just a state of mind of the incident controller?
We provide regular situation reports electronically via our electronic systems from the incident to state level. And each of those reports contains a statement of level of incident. So at some point, a situation report would have been submitted showing its change in level.
And you gave these situation reports during the course of Saturday?
My planning staff do that.
So they would be available?
Yes, they should be available electronically.
And in there, will we find, will we not, a reference to the fact that it's been reclassified as a level-three fire?
I think you should.
Can I glean from what you've said, you're not sure whether you did it on the basis of your own authority, or whether it was done at one of the IMT meetings?
No, I don't have those records.
Can these records be made available?
The situation reports can be, yes.
Can I ask you about paragraph 43? That's when you say you start your IC shift at 7 o'clock on Saturday morning. In fact, in paragraph 42, you say that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, and then in 43, you say you were given a copy of the incident shift plan for the day shift on 8th of February 2014. Is that correct?
That's what my statement says, yes.
And is that, is the statement correct? You were given a copy of that plan?
I have a copy of a shift plan. I have a copy of a shift plan dated 8th of February, sorry, for day, 8th of February, day shift, approved by Peter Lockwood. It has his signature on it. I'm not sure at what time it came into my possession.
Well, is this the one that you say that you were given and referred to as being given in paragraph 43?
That's correct.
Would I be able to look at that document, please?
Yes, certainly.
You also say-
It's a copy. I'm not sure whether the original is.
Thank you.
And I think it'd be helpful for the board to look at it, too. Thanks.
Would it be convenient if we could possibly get some photocopies made? Are you able to tell me, because we're taking any further time on it at this point?
Could you move on another second?
Yes, I think that might be best. I certainly can. You also refer to the fact in paragraph 43, if I could take you to your, paragraph 43, you've stated the last sentence. The maps forming part of the ISP indicated that the size and scope of the fire were consistent with a level-one fire. Were the maps in that document that I just saw, or are they separate?
My understanding is on the back of the document.
So on the back of the document, I'll find the maps, will I?
Yep.
And that, possibly with other things, informed you that the size and the scope of the fire were consistent with a level-one fire, is that correct?
That's correct.
Within the document, does it otherwise describe it as a level-one fire? If you can't remember, say so.
Various documents have opportunities in various places for the level to be defined. I'd have to go through that detail.
So you did check the document to answer my question?
That's correct.
Now, after you took over control of the fire, you'd had an IMT assembled, and they met by 11am, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think you say you'd normally meet every two hours, but on this occasion, they met at 11am, 1pm, 5pm, 7pm, is that correct?
That's correct.
You didn't meet at 3pm?
No.
Was there any reason for that?
No need. There were no active spreading fires in my area of responsibility at the time. I was satisfied that the works that we needed to do were happening.
Okay. Now, you say that you'd made an assessment that this was low risk, but there was catastrophic consequences from the fire, presumably if it escaped and again got out of control, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was because you assessed the fact that it was within close range of Morwell, a number of significant and important pieces of state infrastructure?
That's correct.
Presumably you also took into account that we were talking about coal mines here that weren't only important state infrastructure, but they were extremely vulnerable to fire?
That's correct.
So was it, as a result of making that assessment, that you decided to reclassify the fire as a level-three fire?
In part, also partly because of the risk to life and property, as I say, that when-
In moral, in moral.
And in close proximity to the original fire.
Now, you say that that may have, in fact, been reclassified at one of the IMT meetings?
That's correct.
But you can't remember that?
No.
There were four IMT meetings on that day. Do you have notes with respect to those four?
I believe I answered that question before. There are no formal minutes of those meetings.
I didn't ask you that question. I asked you a different question. Have you got notes of that meeting?
Yes, I have my logbook with my notes.
Can we, can you go to the first of those meetings?
Time being?
11am, according to your statement?
Yes.
And there is a note there, is there, of that meeting?
Yes.
And without asking you, from that at the moment, how long is it? What percentage of an A4 page or pages?
Half a page.
A half a page. And do you have another one for 1pm?
I do.
What size?
Are there any two, two words associated with that meeting?
What were those two words?
One was about accommodation, and one was night shift.
Then you have another note at 5pm?
Yes.
And do you have, how long is that note?
One sentence.
What's that, what does the sentence say?
Resources available from O800, Nuji slash Erika.
And could you tell us what that means?
So Nuji and Erika were two of the other incident control centres in the cluster for which I was responsible. That's just confirming that there will be some resources at those sites the following day.
Available to those sites?
That's correct.
So there's nothing there about the Hearn's Oak Fire?
No.
And the, is there a minute for the 7, a note for the 7pm?
I have handover notes with Stephen Wall.
How, how long are those notes?
It's four lines.
Would you read those four lines, please?
Safety, working under the transmission lines. Safety, working on freeway. Safety, working on the railway line. And SMEAC's situation, which is low risk, extreme consequence.
If I could take you back to the start of your session, is there any way this board can be informed as to what resources were being deployed or employed in containing the Hearn's Oak Fire when you got in charge of the fire?
I don't have evidence.
All right, well, let me ask you a different question then. Do you have any recollection of the resources that were being employed to contain the fire when you took control of the fire?
My understanding that two local CFA task forces were assigned and allocated to Hearn's Oak Fire on the Saturday morning. They weren't on-site, to my knowledge, at the time I commenced my shift. They did arrive at some time during the morning. And as I said, based on the observations from aircraft, we started sourcing additional heavy plant, a local helicopter from cock plantations, and then the other resource requests later in the day.
So when you came on, you're not sure there was anything there, but you think there were two task forces? What constitutes a task force?
I did answer that before. Five CFA trucks and a commander. Sorry, am I confusing task force and?
Are they the same?
No. So a task force can be five mixed units, a strike team is five like units. I should be using the- I should be using the term strike team.
In fact, there were two strike teams where they were being assigned. Now, you've got no note of when they arrived?
No, I don't.
And you've got no note of whether they stayed there during the day and whether other appliances or units or strike teams joined them, whether aerial or otherwise?
I have notes that the light helicopter from Hancock's Plantations was activated at one o'clock.
One PM?
Yes, I have notes that additional heavy dozer was sourced and being deployed. I don't have the detail of which trucks were online at which time.
And when you say which trucks, which trucks from the two strike teams?
That's correct, yes.
They could have been coming and going throughout the course of the day, as far as you know?
That's correct. See if they could change an entire strike team, and I wouldn't necessarily be fully aware of it. I would be monitoring gross resources.
What information do you get as the controller of this fire in the course of your ten- or twelve-hour shift as to what resources are being employed and to how the fire is performing?
So the operations officer would brief me formally at the incident management team meetings and at other times in between. And based on the conversations I have with them and any mapping or other products they would provide me, such as the photo imagery that I see, I would make an assessment of whether or not the resources available and deployed are making progress at the rate that I would want them to be making, so that I could then make a decision about whether I increase resources or request additional resources.
And so the person who really would know what was happening on the ground during this day was your operation manager?
That's correct.
And what he does is he reports to you orally, or he might show you photographs, aerial photographs principally, I presume, of the fire to demonstrate to you how it's performing?
That's correct.
And for example, would you get any written reports at all during the course of the day?
No.
Okay. Well, the photographs that you got during the course of the day, would they be available?
Many of them are. They're contained as attachments in emails to the regional controller or to the incident controller.
So there'd be emails to incident controller being you?
So simplistically, aircraft flying around, takes photos at the side of the aeroplane, electronically downloads them and sends them to a group email.
And that would include you?
Yes.
And so there'd be email records of the day of much of the information with which you were provided?
That's correct.
And they'd be readily obtainable, wouldn't they?
To this forum?
Yeah.
Yes.
They could be provided, and that would show the fire how it was performing during the course of the day?
Yes.
And you give evidence about the models, the Phoenix models that were being prepared? How do you receive those?
Peter McHugh had an extract of it, and he was providing me with the hard copies which is then attached to my statement.
Somebody presumably prepares these things?
That's correct.
Inserts assumptions?
That's correct.
For example, you identified an assumption is the time of the breakout of the fire? Is that correct?
That's correct.
But presumably also is the endpoint of the fire, which it's shown, or modeled at least, must also be identified. How long is to suggest that the run's going, is that right?
That's correct.
And for example, on the ones that we saw that you have produced, do you know how long it was? The Phoenix program was told to assume the fire would last or progress to get to the point-
No, I don't. I don't.
Who makes, who prepares this?
Most of them are run by the fire behavior specialists that are attached to the state control centre.
And do you, as the incident controller, request that they're bound to take them, particularly on a busy day like this day, for, in respect of your fire?
We can request them. Some of them are run automatically under the state operating arrangements and provided to us.
Did you request it in this day, or were they all given to you automatically?
My understanding is that Peter McHugh requested them, and he showed me the product.
The two that you've produced were not the only ones you've said that were produced that day?
That's correct.
In your statement, you said that they were late in the day. Paragraph fifty-three, you say late on Saturday. For a precise time, I cannot recall. Eight February two thousand and fourteen hours provided copies of the Phoenix modeling for the Hurns Oak McDonald's track fire. Do you know whether that would have been after five o'clock? Do you mean by late on Saturday?
The one I'm referring to in particular is the one that was made available to Nick, which I've seen earlier today.
I'm sorry. In paragraph fifty-three, you're referring to the one that you made available to Nick Demetrius, is that correct?
That's correct.
But you don't produce that one as part of your statement?
No, I didn't.
Was that a deliberate decision?
No.
Why do you say that that reference at fifty-three is a reference to the Phoenix model which you didn't produce, rather than the ones that you did produce?
I indicated earlier that much of the documentation associated with the running and the operation of the incident control centre is retained at the incident control centre. The documents that I provided with my statement just happen to be ones that were still in my possession at the time I generated the statement. There are a number of documents that I've not been able to access.
Prior to seeing it referred to today or yesterday, when was the last time you'd seen the one that you gave to Nick Demetrius?
At the incident.
And was it only today when you saw it again that you realised that's the one that you thought you got late on Saturday?
I know that's the one I saw late on Saturday, because that's the one that triggered me to arrange for people living to the south-west of the original fire to move out before the night.
When did you receive the other two?
I can't be certain.
Did you receive them during the course of Saturday?
That's my belief.
What is the feature about the one that was sent to Nick Demetrius as opposed to the two that you've produced that makes you think that that was the one that made you concerned about the residence of Morwell, which you suggested might have activated?
It uses a different trigger time. It was, to my knowledge, run with an escape happening in the early hours of the morning under the influence initially of a north-east wind, followed by the north-west wind, which is why it has a very different shape to the ones that are attached to my statement. And it shows the fire spreading into and around properties and houses in close proximity to the original fire.
The witness might be shown, he's a gain if he could be. If I could just ask you to clarify this for me. Possibly he could be taken to the nine AM one. To be fair, Mr Jeremiah, you recognise this as the as the first of the two that you did attach to your statement, correct?
That's correct.
And does that not also show the fire, in whatever duration, from a nine AM Sunday morning release, approaching the western part of Morwell?
Yes, it does.
Was there some feature of that one which would be less concerning than the other? And do you want to see the other to make a comparison?
No, they all tell me the same message, that both the Alorn Mine and the Morwell Mine and the Western Edge of Morwell are under threat.
So that one would have concerned you just as much?
Absolutely.
Yes. And can you remember when you saw that one?
No.
But you can remember you saw the one you sent to Mr Demetrius?
Yes.
Would you not have been more concerned if you'd seen that one? Because that shows the imminent threat of what will occur on the following morning if the fire breaks its containment lines?
No, they all demonstrate a potential spread of the fire based on different breakout times. And they all run for a limited duration. So if you allow the fire to spread for a longer amount of time, you'll get a different impact zone. And they all assume no suppression effort.
But you don't know what the assumptions were for these different depictions as to how long the fire had run to get to the point where it's depicted?
That's correct.
Look, my question's a simple one. On Saturday, would you not be more concerned by what was being depicted as the effect of a broken containment lines at nine AM on Sunday morning, rather than one AM on Monday morning?
I understand the references to one AM on Monday morning. I don't understand them.
Okay. Well, possibly then if the witness could be shown page forty-eight of Mr Harkins' statement? Now, what breakout time? Is that an expression that is satisfactory? Do you know what I mean by breakout time?
Yeah, certainly.
What breakout time did you understand was assumed by this model?
It was a breakout during the middle of the night, early hours of Sunday the ninth.
And what made you conclude that?
That was the advice I was given at the time, and it's consistent with the spread rate based on the weather forecast at the time, spreading initially under the influence of a north-eastly wind.
Did you see the imprint at the top-left corner of the depiction?
I've seen reference to it, I don't understand it.
But plainly, that's not consistent. If that's the breakout time, then that's not consistent with your understanding, is it?
I don't understand what that time print means.
Do you notice it says two-ten-two-four-two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
Well, it could be the second of October two thousand and fourteen, couldn't it?
Yes.
But it's more likely, isn't it, that it's a reference to the tenth of February, and they're using the American style of short dating?
As I say, I don't understand that time print. I don't know whether it's Australian Eastern Standard Time or whether it's universal time coordinates. There's a number of options it could be.
Well, I better get this much clear. Do you understand that the United States often uses a month, day, and year, rather than our day, month, and year?
Yes, I do.
Would you not assume that was a reference to the tenth of February?
I didn't take note of it.
Okay. Was there anything on this document which indicated to you what the breakout time of the document was?
No. The discussion I had with my planning staff was to investigate what would happen if a fire broke out during the middle of the night, and that's the product I was provided with.
Have you got a note of this request?
No.
Have you got the email that you received with this particular depiction?
No. I'm not aware that I got it via an email. I'm assuming that Peter McHugh, in carrying out his duties and responsibilities within the planning unit and leading the planning unit, has acquired the product and provided it to me.
But how would he have got it? Can he prepare them himself without reference to Melbourne?
I don't know. He would have been in discussions with Melbourne. He would have had to have obtained some product from Melbourne.
The other two that you do produce have got plain dates written on them, don't they?
Yes.
You can't explain the difference?
No, I can't.
You sent this, was it you who sent this on to Nick Demetrius by email? I'm now referring to page forty-six of Mr Harkins' statement?
Best of my knowledge, no, I didn't send it. I had conversations with Nick and with Peter collectively and asked that the information be made available to him.
Okay. Well, can I ask you about this? Could the witness be shown the previous page, or two pages previously, please? If you could, towards the bottom of that page, yes, it's where it is there. It says, "From ICC Terrevin", would that have been from your office?
It would have been from the incident management team. We have a number of generic logins. That one has the planning section in brackets afterwards.
Yes.
That would indicate to me that it was from Peter or one of his staff.
And that was just sent to Mr Demetrius? And Mr... Oh, so just Mr Demetrius is the only recipient, is that correct?
That's what I observed.
And this was this was on your instruction that it should be sent to him?
Yes.
Had you given him personally any other models, depictions of Phoenix model?
No, I hadn't.
Ask you to go back to your statement, please. And ask you to have a look at it. Hundred and six. Ask you to read that to yourself again. Does it not, were you not intending to suggest by that, when you said- Does it not, were you not intending to suggest by that, when you said Nick Demetrius on Saturday the eighth, the Chair of the CGIG and also a member of the REMT, attended the Terregum IM team, was briefed on the potential bushfire threat associated with the Hearns Oak McDonald's track fire and was provided with copies of the Phoenix predictions, which clearly showed that should the Hearns Oak McDonald's track fire containment break, spotting from that fire was likely to occur in the Hazelwood Mine, the Phoenix forecast pages for 9am and 11am on 9 February provided and attached to 12. Was that intended to communicate that those two were given to him?
Yes.
And were they given to him?
To the best of my knowledge.
When you say to the best of your knowledge, what do you mean by that? Have you got any recollection of giving those two to him?
Had a conversation with Peter McHugh and with Nick. Peter had to source documents. And my recollection is I asked Peter to make them available to Nick.
Which ones did you tell him to make available?
All of them.
Is that a convenient time?
I'm concerned about
the time.
The time that we're going over and over. I think I'm prepared to keep going.
Well, sir, I was going to suggest that maybe overnight we might be able to get hold of some of these records. My concern is that the board's just not being provided with the records of this very
Thomas, you come to me guaranteed it's going to be very short in the morning. There's always continuing problems with not being able to get material. And I'm afraid we need to keep the pressure off.
Well, possibly, I can, I'm comfortable about keeping
I think go as far as you can tonight. And if there's still a couple of loose ends, we aim to spend as little time as possible in the morning on patching up the loose ends.
Do you know how many depictions you have when you gave instruction for them to be given to Nick Demetrius?
The three we have been speaking about, the two I had in my possession when I prepared my statement, and the other one we've prepared today are the three I have strong recollections of.
Of who? There may have been others?
May have been others.
And when you asked for them to be given to Demetrius, was that to be given to them by email?
My understanding, yes. Nick asked for electronic copies that he could distribute.
And I was taking you to the email. It appears that only one was. You can't explain that?
No, I can't.
And on the email, if I could take you back to it, Mr Demetrius seems to be of the view that this is the latest mapping from Phoenix Model at 1am hours tomorrow night, worst case scenario. This may be the fire protection. Now, was worst case scenario something you told him was the position?
No, my interpretation would be, as I said, the Phoenix Model runs assuming no suppression. So it theoretically gives you the worst case scenario. Because if you can suppress some of the fire, you would expect to get a smaller footprint, a smaller impact area.
Does these tell you anything more than this fire, if it breaks its containment, at some unidentified time? Although it appears that Demetrius had a view of what time it was, but if it breaks it, then after an undefined period, it could reach all or the mine?
That's correct.
Doesn't say anything as to the probability of that?
No.
And in fact, your view was that was a very low probability?
That's correct.
It was a low risk this would occur? Was it, did you not think it was appropriate? Sorry, I withdraw that. You only did this because Demetrius asked for it, is that right?
No, we communicated, we contacted Nick. We indicated that it was important that he be made aware of the information we had suggesting potential impact on a number of critical assets, Elawn and Hazelwood.
And do you not think it appropriate that you might contact the particular mine that on the basis of this modeling, you were concerned could be affected?
There were many critical assets in and around the Latrobe Valley. I used the conduit being the Essential Industries Group to make that contact.
Can I suggest to you that there's a major problem with doing it that way, and that is, is that the if you don't contact them directly and give them the message, then they don't know what the probability of the fire breaking its containment or how long it'd take to reach there, both of which are critical features, aren't they, in determining their reaction to it?
Can you say that again?
Certainly. The critical message you would have to send, wasn't it, to, through Demetrius, was to Hazelwood Mine?
No, it was to all Essential Industries in Latrobe Valley.
Yes, well, this fire on this depiction was critically going to threaten the Hazelwood Mine, wasn't it?
And Elawn?
To a lesser extent, Elawn, but the northwesterly run was towards Hazelwood.
That's correct.
And to send that document off without any explanation as to when the containment line is assumed to be broken, for how long the fire would have to run before it rose at that point, and the possibility of it breaking containment lines, I'm suggesting tells them nothing.
They would have had access to a certain amount of weather information, which would have under their own preparedness plans activated certain actions within their enterprise. My endeavour was to alert them that with this fire, should it break out, the risk was higher and they may need to take additional steps.
I'll put it to you, that's because you had sent them this particular depiction, which in fact related to Monday, when you would have been much better at least than the one that related to Sunday morning. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't.
I don't know if I'm given much help in this matter of investigation further by except what you're saying, that there are unanswered questions.
But I don't know that this witness is capable of answering them.
I'll, I'll move on to another topic, sir. You were asked a question before about the time of the, of the Driffield fire started. And I think you say that you're unaware of that and unable to assist.
My records say 2.30, 14.30.
Do you have your records there which says that?
Yes.
See, Mr Laxley gave evidence that it was 14.37.
As I say, to be definitive, I would refer you to Esther and the triple O calls.
Yeah, but I was just wondering, your record, do you have a record there that someone reported to you that it was at 2.30?
I have a time record at 14.15, reference to the Jindavik Fire, potential multiple new ignitions at Stresleki Highway at 14.35, three confirmed.
So what, and the time of the first entry was?
14.15.
14.15, so that was the first you were told, that you recorded at least that you were being told about it?
At 14.15, I made a time reference in relation to the Jindavik Fire.
And I thought you added some multiple?
Yeah, so there's some references to potential ignitions. There's no timestamp with that. But certainly at 14.35, where I've written three confirmed, so certainly at 14.35, confirmed three. Somewhere between 14.15 and 14.35, I've made the note that there's new fires.
Can I just deal with the question? Requests for assistance from the CFA would not, as a matter of course, be directed to you, I take. From outside, it's from third parties, from the mine, the request for assistance from the CFA would not be made to you directly?
If I was the incident controller, they should be made to the incident control team. In terms of a fire wholly within the mine, independent of this bushfire, if they were seeking additional resources, my understanding is they would contact the CFA direct.
Yes, but plainly enough, if the, if the fire within the mine was a direct consequence of the bushfire, therefore effectively part of the bushfire is not spotting of the bushfire.
That's correct.
And that's the way you'd treat it?
Yes.
And that's the way you did treat it?
Yes.
And you gave support to the mine as soon as you were able to give support to the mine?
That's correct.
And you had no doubt from an early time in the afternoon about the need to provide support from the CFA to the mine as soon as you were able to do so, taking into account proper priorities?
That's correct.
You were, you say in paragraph forty-one that there was no request made to you for resources or assistance. And the point you make about that is, is that if there was, they didn't suggest there was any separate fire there, is that the point you're making?
No, this is in relation to preparedness.
Preparedness.
That's correct.
It's not in relation to the fact that there was a mine fire. You were aware of that early in the afternoon?
That statement is about, I alerted them of the risk.
Yes.
They didn't come back to me and say, "Well, in order to help prepare for that risk, can you provide resources or do other work"?
When you say you alerted them of the risk, you told Nick Demetrius?
That's correct.
And you now know that he, as far as you're concerned, was a source of misinformation by sending them something suggesting that it wouldn't be until a worst case scenario until 1am on Monday, and that's not the message you intended to be sent, was it?
My expectation is the information I provided to Nick, he would pass on in his role as Chair of the Industry Group.
And the message you didn't want passed on, I withdraw that, you did not intend him to pass on a message to say that the depiction was the worst case scenario at 1am on Monday?
Can you restate that?
You saw the emails, have you not, that were actually sent?
Yes.
And you saw the fact that rightly or wrongly, leaving that question aside for the moment, that Phoenix model was depicted as being the position as at 1am on Monday morning, not Sunday morning. Do you not understand that from the emails?
As I've said before, the timestamp on that product, I don't understand.
Yes, I'm asking you.
My objective was to have Nick understand the risk of the fire breaking out and its potential impact on the major industries around Latrobe Valley.
And rightly or wrongly, you relied upon him to communicate that to the mine?
That's correct.
And if you say if that was miscommunicated, that's not your responsibility?
I delivered the best information I could deliver.
The only other matter, I think paragraph seventy-six then probably goes to the relevant question, which I was driving at before when you explained what paragraph forty-one means. And I'm grateful for that. Seventy-six was that you were aware at an early time that there was fire in the mine, but you were unable to divert resources to it at that time because you had priority of threat to life in the Morewell Township and its environs that you had to attend to as a priority, is that correct?
And other critical assets.
And other critical assets. So that will complete my cross-examination, although our request would be for the, at least the emails or any other records to be produced. And if we could have a look at the logbook.
Please. If the board pleases, I had four, only four questions, and with a view to releasing this witness, would the board indulge me in pursuing that or is it best to?
I presume as you deem to act.
Thank you.
We just leave the possibility. We may have to come back. I'll be just able to get out of the way everything we can at this point.
And to take up a matter that, oh, thank you very much, the board pleases. Mr Jeremiah, to take up a matter that our friend Mr Rinn pursued with you at some length, two points about the Phoenix imaging. How many did you give to Mr Demetrius, as best you recall, and why did you give them to him?
Best of my knowledge, the three products we've seen today were all made available to Nick. The reason for making them available to him was to elevate his level of awareness of the risk above and beyond that which he would have got from just the weather forecast.
Second question. After resources were diverted to fight the Jack River Fire, what was the consequence of that diversion on your ability to deal with the Hearns Oak issue?
Dealing with two fires meant we had to spread the resources we had between those two fires. If we'd been able to retain more resources on the Hearns Oak Fire, potentially we would have been able to achieve a different result. But given the risk to life and property, under the priorities I had to deal with, I had to spread those resources.
Third question. You were asked about the reclassification of the Hearns Oak Fire from a Level One to a Level Three. If you were to give us a single most pressing reason for that reclassification by you, what was it?
The consequences should it escape.
Consequences to whom and to what?
To life, property and infrastructure as defined by the Fire Services Commission.
Last point. You were asked about the Joint Standard Operating Procedure very early in questions today. How would you describe the cooperation between agencies involved in the firefighting effort with which you were concerned?
Certainly for both the incident management team I was leading and the incident emergency management team. I received full cooperation and support, and it operated from my perspective in a relative seamless way.
Board pleasers, those are the questions of this witness.
The microphone. I don't have any reexamination subject to anything further that might arise.
You know, is that possible? Do you want to give an outline of where you now stand, Ms Richards?
So Mr Jeremiah was the first of the incident controllers. There are six more incident controllers, and over the lunch and adjournment, we considered whether it was necessary to hear in person from all of them. At this point, I can say that as far as council assisting are concerned, we don't require Mr Bloink to attend to answer questions. We're content to just tender his statement. And we're reviewing whether we can excuse some of the others from attending tomorrow. The remaining incident controllers whose statements we will either tender or hear from tomorrow are Kostakatsikas, who was a deputy incident controller at the same time as Mr Bloink, Barry Foss, Bob Barry, John Haynes and Ross Sullivan. And I will provide a definite message to the state's representatives as soon as we can after we break about which of those we're required to attend tomorrow. And there's a community witness tomorrow, Doug Steely. So I'm relatively optimistic that we will complete that evidence by, by the end of tomorrow. So I'm relatively optimistic that we will complete that evidence by the end of tomorrow.